That work for you, man? Yeah, you bet. Yeah, yeah, we cranked it up. Exactly.
That's awesome.
I was getting my little Laura Ingalls on this weekend anyway, so I kind of feel like I was part of that.
Little House on the Prairie?
Yeah.
That was before then. No, that was after that.
After.
Long after. Long after that.
She ended up, her daughter Rose ended up becoming part of the, uh, one of the people who started to go to the party.
Laura Ingalls Wilder's daughter?
Yeah.
Wow.
Rose. Ingalls, Laura Ingalls Wilder, whatever she called herself. I don't know.
Yeah, it does look like.
Oh, I'm gonna find my pen now. We got a new purse, too. We have a state claim for like a day. It's not that much in there.
Test, test. Ladies, are we recording? Awesome. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item of the evening is MOA presentation. Cynthia Madden-Latner. Did I? Latner, thank you. President and Executive Director of MOA is present to discuss the Museum of Outdoor Arts. I see you brought Tim.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to present tonight. This is probably the most detailed annual report we've ever presented. And Tim is going to go through and show you what went on as far as MOA was concerned this year with the City of Inglewood. And we'll do some presentations of the numbers. And then I'll do that, and then we'll take questions at the end.
Sorry about the image. It's a little lopsided for some reason. Maybe.
We can deal with it.
Oh, I might have messed with it, yeah.
Of course. It's an aesthetic thing. Yeah. Well, that's just a little better. Okay. Yeah, there we go. Okay. So Cynthia said, thanks for having us. I'm gonna be reporting on the programming that we offered here in Inglewood. And this report goes from October 2015, from when we last reported, through September of this year. So, first of all, due to a lot of the comments last year, we were able to improve our attendance tracking system. And this year, we had just nearly sixteen thousand visitors through our galleries. And that's between our events and tours and various things like that. Everything that occurred at City of Inglewood. And, of course, we can't really track the numbers of people who interact with our outdoor sculpture, but we guess it's in the thousands. We just don't know. We don't have a way to do that. But, of course, we see people out there all the time, so. We spent three hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars in our program expenses in Inglewood over that last year. And our lifetime expenses over the last sixteen years is nearly seven million dollars in programs. So, again, like I said, we improved our attendance tracking. So we're able to get a better vantage point of who's visiting us. It looks like a majority of visitors are from Arapahoe County, of course. That makes sense. And then next is Denver. Also, I'll mention that all of this is in your packet, so if you want to look at it more thoroughly, you can. I don't want to inundate you with too much detail. And then we break it down by demographic, according to those we see in the museum most often. So the fifty percent notates our standard patron. And then the next largest group is nineteen percent, which is the, um, I can't see that. Oh, Inglewood residents, sorry. And then it's about even through special needs. We get a lot of special needs groups, schools, and elderly groups. So our collection here in Inglewood, I know you all are probably fairly familiar with it, but I just wanted to review it briefly. We have thirty-six permanent outdoor artworks and eight indoor artworks at the Civic Center. And we spend, on average, about fifty thousand dollars a year in maintenance and conservation on our collection in Inglewood. And these are just some of the images that you all are probably familiar with. These are some of the indoor pieces.
Cool picture of the, uh.
Chandelier.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, yeah, and so actually, some of you may have noticed, the chandelier was just conserved and it was reinstalled this Saturday, so it's nice and clean. So now I'll talk about our exhibitions from October through September. First, I wanted to acknowledge that we have this open sign now. That was a comment last year that we wanted to become a little more inviting and let people know that we're there and we're open. So we did include that, that new sign, which I think has helped drive attendance a little bit. So "Polycemic" by Joel Swanson was a huge success for us. We had about thirty-one hundred people, four hundred and five Inglewood residents, and I broke it down at the bottom, a hundred and forty-nine special needs. And we also included an artist discussion in Hampton Hall in February, which was a tremendous success. And, of course, you all know, we participate in the Inglewood Calendar Exhibition annually. We participate in the jury selection, as well as the installation and hosting the reception. And just so you know, the exhibition attendance, this is based on twenty-five people a day walking through the atrium, which I feel is a very conservative number. Then we had Kenneth Lebrecht's Snow Crystals over the winter months, which was a fairly popular installation. And I just want to point out, we always include educational elements in all of our exhibitions that tell people more about the artist and the work. Then we had John Doyle Builder's Series in the Atrium Gallery. So this was sort of our blockbuster exhibition. Daniel Sprick is a renowned local painter. He, he's in the Denver Art Museum collection. He's, he's very well-known in the art world. I don't know if any of you know him, but it was a very well-received exhibition. Our opening, we probably counted about six hundred some people throughout the night, which was probably the largest opening I've ever experienced, which was amazing. We also hosted Athena Project, which is a local nonprofit organization that highlights women in art. And Diane Christensen was the artist we featured. This is in our White Box Gallery. And, of course, our Design and Build Education Program. Every summer, we create an exhibition through Education Program, Design and Build, which I'll talk a little bit more in detail about later. And what's in the atrium right now that you can all see is the Design and Build Alumni Exhibition. We always invite three Design and Build alumni to participate in this exhibition, which is always nice to see where they've gone in their artwork. And, of course, we have our permanent Installation Cabinet of Curiosities. This has continued to be a local, popular exhibition. A lot of people come in just to see this, no matter what we have on display. I'll note that it's based partly on Fairy Tale and partly on Nursery rhyme. Coming up, opening October fifteenth, which you all have an invitation in front of you, is Reinventing the Image. We'll be featuring the artwork of over twenty-one local established artists. So it's an invitational. I'm guessing that exhibition will draw at least four hundred some people to the opening, which will be great. So now I'll talk about our education efforts. And first of all, I think you all are aware of our Utility Box endeavor, which I think was a tremendous success. And so I'll just go through that in detail with you guys now. So first of all, it was a great collaboration. We worked, obviously, with the City Arts Commission, Inglewood High School, and Colorado's finest high school of choice. This included several workshops in the classroom with professional artists. And students were able to come up with several designs and then go through the public art process. We formed a committee of local community members and stakeholders, and they participate in the art selection process. So the students really learned about the public art process, which was a huge benefit to them. Also note that when they were out there, a lot of community members stopped by and mentioned how great this was, and they loved seeing this kind of thing happen in their community. So they did five boxes, ones on display down by the library on the north side. A couple of you guys, I think Amy and Steve are up here. They stopped by, and I know Lorette stopped by as well, which was great to have that support to the students. So our Design and Build Program is our staple education program. We work with high school students and undergraduate students primarily. Two of these programs occurred in Inglewood this year. Of course, the Utility Box Project that I just talked about, and then the indoor exhibition I'll talk about now. So what we do is, we invite, well, we recruit, I should say, nine undergraduate students from across the country. So we had interns from Louisiana, Wyoming, Kansas, Texas, and Colorado. They work about thirty-five to forty hours a week under a lead artist in the studio at MOA. And they're paid a stipend, and they can also receive college credit for their commitment. So what we do is, we provide them with a theme. This year was reinvention. And we provide them with the gallery space. So they come up with these artworks. They're all collaborative, with the exception of one piece they get to do on their own. And so in eight weeks, they go from nothing to a complete exhibition, which is a huge thing. It's garnered a lot of popularity in the local undergraduate scene. So a lot of the undergrads that I talked to are very excited about it, and they love coming to Inglewood, so. These are just some images of their process. So they're in the studio, like I said, eight weeks. Of course, they have to go outside to do certain things because of spray paint and stuff. We can't do that in our studio. And then this middle image here was at the opening. It's always nice to get a snapshot of everybody in the end. Something new we started this year was our Artist in Residence Program. So our studio is heavily used in the summer months for Design and Build, but it was lightly used else, you know, around the other months. So we decided to invite artists into the studio. So our first Artist in Residence is Maeve Eichelberger. And she did a residency, winter, spring. And we actually hosted two artist process demonstrations, which brought people into the studio. And they were able to understand her process and all that. And plus, they got to come into the Inglewood Civic Center, and some of them hadn't been in there before, so it was kind of a cool thing. Our upcoming resident starts this week. This is Dimitri Obergfeld. He's an up-and-coming local artist, and I'll just point out that he was recently featured in The New York Times, which is a huge deal. So we're excited that he's gonna be our fall resident. This is just a snapshot of some of the press we got. We were really lucky with press this year. They covered a lot of the happenings and exhibitions and things that we did. We got Westward, Denver Post, more Denver Post than we've ever really gotten, and Inglewood Herald, Littleton Independent, things like that. I'm pushing the button and it's not going. There we go. This particular article, I wanted to point out, this was a feature article in Your Hub and Denver Post. It really emphasized our commitment to Inglewood and the programs that we offer in Inglewood, which I thought was a great marketing endeavor for Inglewood, as far as getting word out about us here. And, of course, Daniel Sprick, we, this was actually on the front page of the art section of the Denver Post. It brought a lot of people into the gallery. In fact, a lot of people who'd never been to our museum came to see the show, so it was really great. Sorry, I'm pushing the button and it's not going. There we go. And our student show was covered as well, which was nice. It's nice for the students, because they can put that on their resume. These are just some other reviews. You can probably not read them very well on the screen, but these are from community members and people who visited the museum. You can probably read them in detail in your packet. But just, you know, I'll point out one short. "I'm proud that Inglewood hosts the MOA as I live in Inglewood." I thought that was a nice comment. And we received many letters from people who visit. I'm not gonna read this verbatim, but basically, it's from a teacher. "We hosted a tour here for students," and she said that a lot of their third graders don't get outdoors much, because they live in apartments. "And it was great for them to come and see the sculpture and interact with the outdoors, and they really liked it." We increased our events in 2016. We had a couple of events in Hampton Hall. We had a film, had an artist discussion, artist in residence workshops, of course, our regular exhibitions and things like that. Everything was pretty well-attended. And we've also had some performances. Here's, this is a Boulder Dance Group in the atrium. And then we had a couple different music acts in the gallery in coordination with our exhibition. We also offer a free tour program in Inglewood, so anyone can call and schedule a tour. We do a lot of groups. It ranges from students to elderly to just your general visitor. I'll also point out that we do support the community a lot. We sponsored the Sounds of Summer Concert Series this year. If you Google "things to do in Inglewood," we're number nine of twenty. Fiddler's Green is actually number one, but technically, that's in Greenwood Village. We know that. Inglewood Education Foundation, we always contribute something to their silent auction every year. Of course, we worked with Inglewood Schools this year. We hosted after-hours event for the Inglewood Chamber. And Inglewood Arts and Up Close and Musical, we provide office space for them within our space that's provided by you. Also, we do promote local businesses, like, I think this is from TripAdvisor, so Museum of Outdoor Arts recommends, you know, like Steakhouse Ten. It's a great place to go before or after you visit the museum. Frame to Art, you know, it's our go-to framer. Nixon's Coffee House. These are all local businesses that we like to support. And this is a lengthy list of in-kind support. I'll just pick a few, but you can read through them later. So like recently, Malle Center has an art show. They needed some art pedestals, so we're happy to loan those to them, no problem. We promote Inglewood Arts events and networking events. And actually, in December, we're gonna be hosting the Denver Commission on Cultural Fairs in Hampton Hall. So we'll be giving them a thorough tour of Inglewood Civic Center and the collection here and the art collection from the city as well. And I'm gonna pass it over to Cynthia to talk about numbers.
Does anybody have any questions about the programs we put on this year? Okay, I know you have a sheet in your packet that has this list of numbers. But this is just a breakdown of what the Museum of Outdoor Arts spent money on this year in Inglewood. And at the bottom, there's a total amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's what actually was spent on programming this year in Inglewood. And that included all the exhibitions that Tim went through. And you can see the list at the top. And also, the Design and Build, the summer Design and Build, plus the Utility Box Design and Build, and our Artist in Residence Program. And Conservation runs the Museum of Outdoor Arts of the pieces just in Inglewood. It's about anywhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars a year usually. So do you have any questions about the list, or? Okay.
Thank you.
This is a list of all of the money that the Museum of Outdoor Arts has spent in Inglewood since we first signed a lease, which was for the year 2000. And you can see it in individual years, the list. And then that the total programming amount of money, along with what we spent in tenant finish. I think a lot of the City Council, at this point, believes that MOA didn't pay anything for their space. We actually initially paid over seven hundred thousand dollars for the tenant finish. We had a raw space when we moved in, and we had to put in all our electrical, everything. Everything from electrical to demising walls to drywall to paint, everything. It was a raw space. And since that time, we've spent an additional around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the years, probably a little more than that. So the total investment, we figured, over sixteen years, has been six million nine hundred and eight thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay.
Looks like we do have a question. Councilmember Berentine.
Without knowing where the money is coming from, because you do receive other, you do receive tax funds from other areas, don't you?
We receive money primarily, the Museum of Outdoor Arts owns Fiddler's Green Amphitheater. So we lease it to Anschutz Entertainment Group. And the bulk of our money comes from the amphitheater and the lease of the amphitheater. We also receive funding from Scientific, Culture, and Facilities District. And then we receive some private funds and a few other grants as well.
Right. Because we don't know the total investment of what the taxpayers are putting into this, and since we don't have the revenue amount, it makes it very difficult. I mean, if I only provided you with what I spend each year, it's not gonna give you a good idea of what, I mean, you have to know what I've got coming in and where that's coming in. And to kind of weigh between, I think part of the discussion has been weighing between the cash amount of money that we give and then the space and the overhead and all of that kind of thing. So when you say that you spent seven hundred thousand dollars to go ahead and get that space ready, a lot of that money was taxpayer money that went ahead and funded that. So we don't have that information. And I had, I was under the impression that we were gonna get the information like a financial report, so that we knew where your money was coming in.
The Museum of Outdoor Arts spent its own money on building out this space. It wasn't taxpayer money.
Okay. But, and that's, I appreciate that, but we don't have any, we don't have the revenue side of this, and that's gonna make making this decision very difficult, if we only have the expense side of it and not where the revenue is coming in. Because part of the concern is, as, as much as you are, and, and I'm sorry about your mother's passing, your family has been very involved in the arts. I appreciate that and done an amazing job with this. But if this is important to us, but it's not necessary for us to give that much money, because you don't need it, then maybe we're doing enough with just the space. And without the revenue piece of that, to get that information in, we don't have a full picture to kind of make that decision.
Well, per our lease, we're responsible to let you know how much money we spend a year in the City of Inglewood. And the City of Inglewood, as you know, gives the Museum of Outdoor Arts ninety-six thousand dollars a year. And I guess we all feel that if we're spending three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year in Inglewood, we have by far met that obligation. In fact, it's three, over three times what we're actually obligated to give you figures on every year.
No, I understand, but the citizens, as we're doing our budget and we're having financial issues going on, if the Museum of Outdoor Arts is already doing well, then maybe we don't need to do that piece of it.
Councilmember Berentine, do you mind?
The cash piece of it. So I'm just concerned that we didn't get that part of it, when as a 501(c)(3), you have some obligation to make sure that that financial information is available, whether it's part of our contract or not. I was just, I'd asked for it, and I'm surprised that we didn't receive it, because I can't make a decision with just that, so.
Oh, well, our financials are a matter of public record.
If you don't mind me to say anything else, that's fine.
No, that's fine. I was just gonna interject. I think I might be able to help the conversation here a little bit. You know, I think we should take one step back and, and first of all, thank our representatives from MOA for being here this evening. I, I think that this has been a wonderful partnership for the City of Inglewood for many years. And your efforts are really, you know, put us on the map as far as cultural arts are concerned, and our residents really value that, that relationship. So I think, you know, maybe taking a step back and saying, you know, we've had a kind of a very long history here, and I think we've been very successful. You know, I, I think the intent of, you know, meeting with you folks regularly, in addition to trying to keep a pulse on what's happening, is that hopefully it can kind of begin a conversation about, I think, what we can do to coordinate a little better, help support you guys in our shared mission, I think, of bringing cultural arts to this residents of Inglewood, and also attracting art lovers to the City of Inglewood. And I think that, you know, we haven't done a great job, you know, probably from our end as well, of communicating and outreach and trying to do that. And I think we've got some, hopefully, some ideas that can excite both of us on how to move this partnership even forward even better. I appreciate your comments about SCFD. You know, we did pass a proclamation in support of that this year, and I know they're hosting an event tomorrow, I think, for a lot of the metro mayors. Unfortunately, I'm not, I don't think I'm gonna be able to attend, but hopefully I can get a statement over there they can read in there to let folks know that we are very supportive of that here in Inglewood. I do want to remind, you know, folks that, you know, I know there was a comment about, you know, a majority of council. I'm not even sure exactly where the majority of council is. You know, keep in mind, we are seven individuals who have very differing opinions on a lot of things. And, but I think it kind of comes down to, and I think Councilmember Berentine was kind of getting at the point of, some members in our community and some members on council have discussed, you know, our annual contribution to you, just because it is not, you know, contractually required anymore. Is that true? I guess is what I'm hearing, and.
What, I think, contractually required?
I'm sorry?
I'm trying to understand, contractually required?
Required by our lease.
Yeah.
You believe it is contractually required?
That, what's contractually?
Our contribution, our annual contribution of ninety-six thousand or whatever is.
Yeah, it's in the lease.
Okay, great. And so maybe that's just some information that could be helpful for us, you know. Certainly, we want to honor our obligations. I think that the reason it was given some scrutiny around budget time is that, you know, some information came out that, you know, this isn't contractually required. And so, you know, some of our processes are to look at things that are not necessarily mandated or contractually required through our current engagements. And then we start to look at, you know, what are our free flowing dollars, and how can we be most effective for that? And so I think, you know, what happened was, we started to have a conversation around that. Just because we want to be good financial stewards to our own people, and I know that you guys have that same consideration within your own organization, so hopefully you can understand that. I think the question, I think, that we're trying to ask, or that Councilmember Berentine probably is trying to ask, is what would be the impact of losing that funding on programming, outreach efforts, those type of things? So we can know that, that's, you know, so that we know if we want to support that or not.
Okay. I think I let you know that it's about thirty to fifty thousand dollars just to take care of the art. And that's something, just being a 501(c)(3) museum, that we'll continue to do no matter what. As far as programming goes, it definitely will have an effect on our programming. Daniel Sprick's exhibition alone was a hundred thousand dollars. And I don't expect everybody. And I don't expect everybody to really be familiar with how much it actually costs to put on an exhibition. I mean, that's not your business, and it's one, I mean, it's not what you do every day, and it is what we do every day. But exhibitions are a lot more expensive than you would think to put on. So, it would, it would affect our programming, and it would affect what we do in Inglewood. Naturally, I mean, one reason, excuse me, one of the reasons we moved here at the time, that was 16 years ago. The city of Denver made us an offer, Douglas County made us an offer. We had four or five different offers to be in different communities. And it was very exciting to be invited but to, into Inglewood, especially at the time when the whole city was being redirected in new urbanism and rebuilt and reconstructed. And we had a real opportunity to integrate the sculpture with the architect David Owen-Triba, with the city, the current, the administration at the time. It was a really special collaboration. So, a lot of the pieces that you see outdoors were, 13 to 15 of them were original. And, and some of them were large pieces that are still there, of course. And under the lease, we were only obligated to put 13 pieces of sculpture. And today, we have 46 pieces of public art in the city of Inglewood. So, we've tripled our obligation to this city as far as continuing to collect public art. In fact, Sculpture Alley, that goes between the two buildings to the parking area, that was a nice collaboration a few years ago, about 10 years ago, that we did with the city of Inglewood, where some of the pedestals were set up. And we purchased all those pieces that are international, and people know the artists internationally, and was curated by a national curator of great reputation. And it was very exciting to do that collaboration about 10 years ago of the public art that's in the alley. But I don't think a lot of people know, because it was 16 years ago, that we only are obligated to have 13 pieces of art in the public here. That's it, per our lease. And we're obligated to spend at least $50,000 a year in programming. That's it, per the lease. And our, the $96,000, of course, can be voted on every year by the city council. You know, it can be voted, but it is stated in the lease that that would, it's part of the lease. But because of some law, and Eric probably knows the law, and you probably know the law, I think it, is it the Tabor or something, the Tabor Amendment, means that the city council has to vote every year. It is, it isn't supposed to be a vote of, do we think this organization is worthy? It's just, it's just to dictate that it needs to be voted on by you, just like the city of Denver has to vote on money being spent every year. And I'm sorry, but I don't know the intricacies of the Tabor Amendment, but as far as the $96,000, it is part of our lease. And I think I already told you, and I guess I want to reiterate it, because I think, I do think it's important for all of you to know that we did put a lot of tenant finish dollars into the space, and we continue to do so, and keep upgrading the space. And we feel that because we're the Museum of Outdoor Arts, what we believe in is a quality experience for everyone. And that's one reason the Museum of Outdoor Arts is free, so everyone can come. It's one reason that our design and build interns, they get a stipend. There's a lot of interns that work for for-profit organizations on Wall Street that don't get one penny, and they work there for six months. Our design and build interns, they get a stipend for being there 35 hours in a week. And it's an excellent collaboration. It's probably one of the best arts internships in the United States, and we're very proud of it. And I would hope that all of you would be proud of it, too. I mean, it happens right here. And we feel really good about going beyond our obligation to the city. We feel this has been our home for 16 years. And Tim did an excellent presentation on showing the different businesses and different entities that we've collaborated with, and we continue to collaborate with. And I guess I don't know what else to say. I can't tell you if you, if the city votes that they no longer will give the Museum of Outdoor Arts, what will be cut or how it'll be cut. I mean, we haven't taken it that far. We have a board of trustees, and we have other employees that we'd have to consult, and we'd have to, we'd have to discuss it. So, I didn't come prepared to say, well, this is what we will no longer.
No problem.
Quite frankly, I wanted to look at this as positive and not think about no longer getting the contribution from the city.
Thank you. I think your answer was extremely helpful, and, you know, hearing that it would impact your, your services and your operations is very helpful for us to understand. And I think that, I appreciate your candor in that, and I think that message will really impact how we view this issue. I think, please give us an opportunity, I guess that was all I asked, to speak with one voice on this as we move forward with our partnership, okay?
Of course.
Thank you.
I did, I did want all of you, though, to pay attention above. We took a snapshot of some of the cities in the state, in Colorado, and what they receive from the cities annually, right? It's annual. And I think it'll, it may be surprising to you just how much money different cities give to arts organizations. And I'm kind of having a hard time reading this, so maybe Tim can read. I think it's important you know, for instance, where the city of Loveland gives that $1.1 million, et cetera.
Sure. So, like, the city of Loveland gives approximately $1.1 million to the Loveland Museum and Gallery. Greenwood Village, $328,000 to the Curtis Center. That doesn't include their administration costs. Lakewood, $2.9 million. Parker, $4 million. You know, it goes down. I think Brighton is most closely related in population to Inglewood, which is still about $1 million in their art and culture program. Also, just so you know, like, this is all public record from the various cities' budget through their facility, or their, through the financial page on their city website.
Thank you. We're running a little behind, but let's keep up the pace here. Turn it over to Councilmember Olson.
Thank you.
Was it Yates? Thank you. Councilmember Yates.
I know. Last year, it's probably.
Hold that mute button, maybe?
No, it's not on at all.
If you hold that mute button, it'll turn on.
Okay. Last year, I was one asking you a lot of the tough questions, and I have to say, this presentation is so much better than it was last year. I would say this evening, you made a good presentation. You showed us the value of what you've put into the community and what we're getting out of it. We had a study here recently with Kahoots, which mentioned that we have more art per capita than any other city within the state of Colorado, and that has to deal with what you're bringing into here. And I think, maybe I wasn't aware of all the things you did last year, but I would definitely say this year, you've done a great job at being more active, or at least more visible within the community. Maybe I was just more aware of what's going on. But you guys have definitely brought value to our community, and something that we can market with, and something that's helping us. And also, in the light that this building can only be used for nonprofit applications, at least for the next seven years, or until we pay off the bonds. I think that space that you're in, and especially now knowing that you paid for the tenant improvement, has been a, a good value to the city because of the recognition that you're bringing. So, I'd like to say thank you for being here, and thank you for your support, and please continue doing the community activities and art projects. Everybody's really, everybody I talked to really enjoys these community art events. And I know the cultural arts have talked about doing murals and stuff like that. And the folks that I've been talking to have been saying, yeah, they'd love to see some of that. And I know MOA is planning on helping with that, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you so much for that.
Councilmember Olson? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, sorry.
I want to say thank you so much for being here and for putting this together. I think this presentation really helps all of us get a better idea of everything that you do, because we're not able to attend every single, you know, function and all that stuff. So, it's really helpful to get a better picture of everything that MOA gives to our community. And I think it's clear that we get extremely ridiculously fantastically good return on our investment, in my opinion. And I think these, all of these examples of the programming and all the folks that come to the exhibits is a really great example of that. And I'm glad you put the press pieces in here as well, because that's something that, you know, you can't really measure with money, how many people read those, and it all goes into the kind of perception of Inglewood. So, thank you so much for including those articles. And I am really glad you guys are here, and thank you for what you do for our community. And I've received many phone calls and emails from constituents, residents, saying, you know, that they love that you're here. So, thank you for everything that you do.
Now, Councilmember Olson, thank you for your kindness there on helping me keep track of who's next.
So, I, I thank you again, too, for the presentation. It was very thorough. And I think my term, my couple terms on council here, it's been my perception that MOA is an, like, a sleeping giant that the city itself has not taken a strong partnership with, and that any kind of sense of lack of understanding of what they have, it's partly communication between both organizations in the last several years, but largely because I don't think we have a vision for how amazing we could be, how amazing it could be if we really utilize this entity. It is by far the best small art place you could possibly go to in the nation. I just don't know anything else like it. And I mean, I, I do get to mix with folks from all over the country, in particular in higher ed, and that internship is one of the most sought after. So, I, we're being known across the country for this. I think the challenge is for us, what are we going to do with this? I mean, I think you've stepped up in the last year to both do more programming that's more obviously focused on Inglewood, or at least you've articulated better as to its impact. The finances here of all the different cities is what I started to look at over the weekend to see, well, who's, who's paying what around the city? This is kind of the norm, and we're way below the norm, although we're giving you free space, so that factors in as well, right? So, I think we have a great deal going with you. I guess the question I would ask us as a council is, what are we going to do to make the most of this amazing asset we have in our city? If they have 16,000 people coming through in the course of a year, what are we doing to capitalize on that? I, it's a huge, I've been talking about leakage forever in the city and how we don't capitalize on what's happening, even the people who come to work in our city, at Swedish and other places. We need to come up with a plan, that's an economic development plan, that really utilizes the movement into our city, and arts is one of them. And you can, like arts or not, or think government should or shouldn't support it, it's definitely a part of quality of life. And if we're trying to shoot for that in our mission statement here, this is part of it, folks. This is, and this is all ages. This isn't just one age over another either. So, I thank you for being here. I'm going to always probably speak on your behalf to this extent, and maybe even more so, I hope, in the future, but that'll be when I'm not in council.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? You know, I think I'll maybe leave the discussion there for this evening, and, and we will continue this conversation. Thank you again for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank, thank you all. Come to our exhibition opening on the 15th. Love to see you there.
Yes, ma'am. What time?
I heard huge things about the Sprickle.
Six. 6:00 PM on the 15th, is that sound correct? Thank you.
Thanks for the coloring book. Especially tonight.
I got a red pen, if you want to borrow.
Need more than one color. Well, I guess I have blue.
Okay. Moving on to our next gen item, that's a financial update. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkles present to give an update on the general obligation bond. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council.
What we'd like to do tonight is go through some of the activities that we'll be involved with in getting ready for the, the bond that hopefully the voters will see fit to pass for us, keeping our fingers crossed on that one. And to that end, I've got David Hart and Maddy Padonovic from PFM, our financial advisors, to walk through all the activities.
Do you want to kick us off here? All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present, David Hart with PFM. What we wanted to do tonight, echoing sentiments that Kathy just spoke to, is do a little bit of a walkthrough. Very clearly, this is a presentation that is toward your making informed decisions, giving you opportunity to ask questions, hopefully presenting us the opportunity to provide answers, and get, get you into a position where you're feeling that any open item has in fact been addressed, and that you're well-positioned, all things considered. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, you've got it. That's tricky. A couple of things to point out here. The material that we're presenting is drawn from industry-wide sources. It's not a, it's not materials that we have ginned up. We, PFM, MSRB, as, as the title speaks to, it's the Municipal Securities Role-Making Board. It sets the tone, in fact, sets the regulations and the rules. The Government Finance Officers Association is very keen on providing advisories, best practices. We should have listed in, in full disclosure, we should have listed a third document, and that document would be your own debt policy. So, we looked at those materials in formulating our presentation to you. And I would suggest that the material is either taken verbatim from those materials or is in keeping with those. Part of, and one of the subsequent slides will speak to this in greater detail, know that we're coming at this as your fiduciary. We have, we're, we don't have a specific agenda other than a very important one, and that is that you feel that your needs are being addressed, and that you're seeing us acting in your capacity as an agent of, of the city, if you will, from a fiduciary perspective as it relates to the contemplated transactions. We will also speak in specifics to certain standards that the MSRB requires of us, and go through this level of detail because it's important as a, as a precursor to what follows. One is the duty of loyalty, and that is, in said so many other words, we are your fiduciary. Another is a duty of care, and that is to ensure that in our actions, we are thought to be exercising care for your interests. Finally, we're, and sort of giving you the shorthand version when I say finally, we are expected to know our client. That is, to make sure that what we are bringing forward to you suits you, that it, that it's not something that would be considered by you or your citizenry to be exotic or, or in any other manner, not suitable to you. So, with that, turn it over to Maddy.
So, just to kind of preview the presentation, as David, I believe, spoke to earlier, this does not presume that you're, that the electorate is supporting. The vote obviously hasn't happened yet. So, it's not presuming a successful, successful election. It's just informing you to be able to take the necessary steps should you wish to proceed, and helping, as David said, helping you make informed decisions. We're not prescribing anything. We're pulling from GFOA and MSRB, the two entities that we also referenced in compiling the debt policy. So, on that note, GFOA has developed a checklist for issuers, such as the city, to help work through some of the outstanding items, what are the decision points, what are, what are the questions that you should be asking as you're going through a potential financing. And so, we're going to go through a few of those, some of them listed at the bottom there, at least, if nothing else, at a high level, but minimally also asking for some feedback from, from the, from the council this evening.
One of the first points that you have a decision to make on is the manner of sale. We're under the. We're under the impression that the council was made aware that an RFP has been promulgated requesting proposals from firms interested in serving as an underwriter on a, in the circumstance that the question is voted favorably, and favorably in this regard would suggest that it is passed. We came to offering that recommendation, both in terms of the manner of sale and that the RFP should be on the street now for a variety of reasons. And what you see here is an excerpt from GFOA as it relates to the factors that speak to why one would sell competitively as opposed to negotiated. Our view is that you will likely be rated as a double A minus. Top of the scale is triple A. Height of the scale with regards to a investment grade would be triple B plus. So, you're sort of right in the middle there. It's also the case, though, what argues for you to be a negotiated transaction is that you are not a frequent issuer. And what we are concerned about in that regard is that you're essentially, when folks talk about that you're selling bonds, what you're actually doing, right, is you're borrowing money. And you're borrowing money in the context of a 2016 election when there will be, and I don't want to sound like Carl Sagan when I say billions, but there will be billions of dollars that are going to be placed before the voters within Colorado on the November 2016 election. In the context of K-12, just in the education, the last estimate we saw was that there would be over $4 billion asked of voters in 2016. We know that there will be other municipalities, other special districts, whether those are fire districts or recreation districts, library districts, there will be any number of matters that will speak to supply. And so, part of the consideration is that when you're not a name issuer and you're in a market that has the potential to be saturated by demand, we think it's in issuer's best interest to have a negotiated offering. And what that means is that the underwriter, instead of just responding in the form of a low-cost bid, that they actually are involved in the pre-sale, they are involved in the marketing of your credit and helping to ensure, along with your financial advisor and bond counsel, and we'll speak to some of these roles in a moment, to in fact ensure that you have the lowest cost of borrowing. There is certainly some risk by an RFP being on the street at this point in time. Your election has not occurred. It is, one of the considerations might be someone saying, well, isn't that a little bit presumptive? The challenge that you face, though, is along with all of that supply, folks who win their elections will turn around and put those dollars to work, meaning they will put bids on the street, or they have already engaged with contractors to put bids on the street. And so, not only do you face the risk that there will be a higher cost of funds, that in the terms of how it is you are able to borrow, you would pay more than you otherwise would, we're also concerned about there being a degradation, an inflationary factor in terms of your purchasing power. So, what we are doing is trying to preserve for you the option of whether to proceed or not, obviously predicated on the fact that you receive a vote in favor of your being an issuer. And it is to that point that we cite this slide, but also want you to fully know that we considered each of the points and others in forming a recommendation to Eric and to Kathy, that an RFP be put on the street and be put on the street sooner rather than later to preserve for you the option to be in the marketplace as soon as possible, should the voters vote in favor of your undertaking that obligation. In terms of trying to give a little bit of word to, or picture to the words, this is an extract from MSRB. It simply speaks to the folks that are involved in a competitive sale, and that was of the two options that were offered on the prior sale, a prior slide, one of the two manners of sale. What we are proposing then, and what the RFP contemplates, is that you would do a negotiated transaction, and that is what is Slide 5. You can see that, and I'm going to, at the risk of creating a certain amount of dizziness, toggle between the two, on the left side of the Green Deal table, there is no difference. There's a municipal advisor, the state and/or local government, bond counsel. It is on the other side of the table who you are dealing with. In a competitive transaction, you see an underwriter, you see various feasibility consultants, the auditor, et cetera. In a negotiated sale, you see then that there's the potential for more than one underwriter. Rating agencies are a constant and disclosure council. It's not, for an issuer such as yourselves, tremendously different, but I will ask Maddy to speak a little bit to the RFP process around the RFP.
Sure. So, as David mentioned, there is an RFP for underwriters out on the street. It was posted to BidNet, as well as we, on behalf of the city, distributed to a number of local underwriting firms that we've either worked with before or are familiar with the city, or we know engage in those activities here in the local market. And so, those are due this Friday by the close of business, and we'll be working with your procurement department and with Kathy to help analyze those responses and kind of go through a list of criteria, one being just generally their experience and expertise selling bonds from Colorado municipalities, as well as some of their price, pricing components, and then the understanding of the city, right? You want to make sure that it's a tailored response, they're not just kind of providing things that they would necessarily provide to another city that they're proposing to. We want to make sure that they actually really understand some of the issues that the city may face in terms of a marketing and sales perspective, including the credit rating presentation. So, those are due on Friday, like I said, and we'll be analyzing those and working with Kathy and the finance group to provide a recommendation.
Specific to your Slide 6, just takes the prior slides and using the word tailor, tailors it to you, whereas before, generically was described as a municipal advisor in the top left, we've named ourselves. We're no longer the state and local governments, we know it's going to be you, we know your bond counsel, bond and disclosure council will be provided by Cootac Rock. The right side of the Deal table is a TBD, and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a moment. The RFP that Maddy spoke to is, will fill in the box for the underwriter. By way of selection, one of the factors that we'll consider is, who is it that the underwriter would propose serve as underwriters' counsel? We will also highlight for you that you have some choice around the rating agency or agencies. The city has historically used UMB as a paying agent, and the bottom right firm is your current external auditor. With regards to your financing team, we've just chosen to now fill in the boxes a bit with a sentence or two defining what the roles and responsibilities of those respective entities are. Certainly, as the issuer, the City of Inglewood is the entity responding to voter authorization. You're fulfilling then in that regard a fiduciary duty that you've undertaken by way of the vote to the constituents, and it will be up to you in terms of the ordinances that are passed to define the financing requirements. As your advisor spoke of earlier, we have a fiduciary duty to you as a client, and we will, as an example of that, hope to, not hope, will orchestrate a rating agency process. Cootac Rock, as bond and disclosure council prepares the documents for issuance, disclosure documents in the form of the official statement and other matters attendant to making a public offering.
So, listed here, lots of TBDs, which we will hopefully be filling in here in the next month or two. Underwriter, as I said before, the RFP is on the street for that currently. Rating agencies, the city previously has been rated by Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, and so, we'll be working with the underwriter to determine if the city will need to have one or two ratings. The larger the issue, typically you're going to see more rating agencies, mainly because there are some investors that require you have two ratings to even purchase the bonds. But given the size of the authorization, that may or may not be necessary. So, particularly to keep costs low, we'll definitely be looking at what the requirement is from their perspective to be able to market and sell the bonds if you would need one rating agency versus two. And then, as David said, paying agent, the city has historically used UMB. They're fairly common in the front range here, but there are several other options available to the city that we'll be working with the finance department to talk through in terms of what the pros and cons are would be of potentially changing.
In terms of the underwriter, one point to make in that regard is that we are contemplating only naming one firm. It's not a requirement, but the size of the transaction, in order to be able to get sort of the best pricing, best attention, your transaction, you know, it's sort of like all bonds are local in some respect, it is a big deal. It is also the case that in the context of the literal billions of dollars that are being sought for authorization, the size of your transaction does not warrant splitting it up among multiple underwriters. Just call that out for your edification. We've spoken a little bit tonight to the obligations of municipal advisor, we've spoken to it before. This slide then is as much for memorializing some of that. We took this largely from the MSRB's materials, paraphrasing it perhaps, but you'll see the phrases I utilized earlier, duty of care, duty of loyalty, all of this speaking to the matters of how it is we know our clients, the suitability of a transaction. In the context of knowing one's clients, it is an important element that we know the essential facts concerning the respective client or current client to ensure that the transaction that is being brought forward matches well. And with that stated, we'll flip to the calendar. Among the matters then is the RFP for an underwriter. All things considered, we're strong in our opinion that the negotiated transaction is the better one for you. In terms of the first reading of an authorization for reimbursement and parameters, ordinance, this is a choice for you. It's listed here in October. What this does is this allows you to have on first reading, ahead of the election, an ordinance that would require two readings, but it would set in place the ability for the city to go forward with the transaction very soon after the election. There's a risk in doing so. One risk is your voters look at that and think, in all crassness, but to get the point across, how arrogant of you, that you would presume that we would vote favorably and that you have this ordinance go before the council, ahead of our vote. From a different perspective, there could be concerns raised by those who manage elections to say, you could be sending the wrong signal to constituents, that their vote is not needed, as in, oh, I must have misunderstood something, I guess they already did have that vote and they, as if, would not go to the ballot and cast a favorable vote. Those are real. And it's, and again, our advocacy is for your making an informed decision, we're not necessarily advocating a particular choice. But in terms of making an informed decision, if you were to ask what our recommendation would be, we would like for you to think carefully about doing so, because if you don't do that, that means you're not having your first reading until after the election, and it's altogether then very likely that you're not going to be able to price your bonds, to sell your bonds, before the end of the year. Not selling your bonds before the end of the year is not, you know, the world is not going to stop spinning. But there are some concerns that we would like you to be mindful of. Just last week, the Federal Reserve indicated that they are expecting to raise interest rates. If you don't sell sooner rather than later, no guarantees in what I'm about to say, but if you don't, in the event that the election is successful and you don't issue sooner rather than later, it is likely that you will have a higher interest rate environment into which you are selling your bonds. It is likely that of the four-plus billion dollars, some significant portion of those other questions are going to be passed unfavorably. It is likely then that demand will cause for, as supply and demand curves from our economics class tell us, oversupply will create a need for you to change your pricing in order to create demand. That then has a compounding effect of if the rates themselves are rising, you may have to sort of bump yours even further to get the time and attention. It's also the case that in the context, and this is a little bit of a nuanced thing for you to be cognizant of, the county is required to set its mill by December 15th. If you don't set your mill for general obligation indebtedness by that time, December 15th of 2016, that means that you cannot levy taxes for the calendar year 2017 to be collected in 2017. On one hand, you could say, all right. On the other hand, what that is doing is, in the event that you issue, even as late as up through, let's just call it June 30th of next year, you will be incurring a bit of a penalty. And why is that? Because then you will not have funds on hand to make a principal payment in calendar year 2016. Your bond holder, the person who lends you money, will then effectively go two years into December of 18 before they are able to receive a principal payment. As a result, the principal will be outstanding longer, and they will then earn greater interest, greater interest in a higher interest rate environment, I might add, or so it is projected. So, we're not, these are not things, you're in a still very highly rate-compressed environment. It's not to say that you must, it's simply to say there are pros and cons. What this contemplates is that you will also have, as you see in November, an RFP for a design build that is at some measure fairly mature, which is to say that you, as a city, have a fair estimation of cost, so that when the bond transaction is ultimately priced, again, presuming that the voters give you their approval, that you then know a final cost or have a very reasonable means by which to bracket. These are the types of things that we need to work through with staff and certainly want to make sure that you, as a council, are aware of. These are the open matters for you to be asking of, if I volunteer Eric or Kathy appropriately, but certainly of your internal leadership and of us as we proceed closer to the election and then deal with circumstances thereafter. It is also the case that in the context of the underwriter, we would have very earnest discussions about the manner by which, in the event that the electoral gives you their support, that you actually undertake the obligation. I don't remember the gentleman's last name, but who had presented on the P3 environment, Dennis, I think was, thank you, spoke of, you don't want to be in a position where you're undertaking obligations prematurely. We agree with that. That's sound practice, but we also think there are trade-offs. So, there's questions of how might we create different structures that mitigate for your having idle funds on hand? At the same time, we want to also be mindful of cost of issuance, we don't want to just sort of be ginning transactions. We want to be very familiar with what the optionalities are that exist in the broader, if you will, municipal marketplace, and all of this is conditioned on when it is you need funds. And one of the expectations, in the event that the electoral says yes, is that you will incur costs almost immediately from a design build perspective, creating the design and moving forward. If you don't issue at this, at a juncture prior to the end of the close of the calendar year, you will have in all likelihood a circumstance where you are having to borrow from yourself to be reimbursed at a subsequent time. That's all fine, it's just one more element for you to work through, and it creates a certain circumstance that Kathy would both have to account for, literally, but it also means that during that period, whatever cash you advance is not available for any other purpose. So, with that, we'll draw to a close. See if there are any questions.
Thank you for that great presentation. Opening up for questions or comments from council. Councilwoman Rulson?
Thanks for the presentation update. Would there be a comparable, if we went ahead and did this first reading in this way, would there be a comparable movement as if we, as if the voters didn't vote, that we could do as well to set us ourselves up so that it isn't the next one? It's not a...
Linda, thank you, excuse me, that's too familiar.
That's right.
Study session's a little more informal, that's fun.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rulson.
For that, there's a lot of this.
A couple answers to offer there. One is, we're, in our last conversation, and perhaps we're misunderstood, but our understanding is, is that in the event that the bond measure does not pass, you are not interested in proceeding. So, I think that's, that's sort of a part of the answer. The other part is, we would presume that you would go to lengths as a city to ensure that in your action, it's all predicated upon your preserving the highest, if you will... that in your action, it's all predicated upon your preserving the highest, if you will, optimum outcome for the citizenry, in the event that they vote yes, but there's, other than language that you would use around that activity, I don't know what it is you would do.
Maybe I may ask you one question of you, maybe. The question is, how could we position ourselves differently? Because I don't want to shortchange us in this process of making this decision. So I don't want to...
Thank you, Councilmember Yates, would you mind using that mic here?
Okay, this would be more of a question of process. If we end up having the bond passed by the people, financially, I think it's wise for us to minimize how much the people have to pay. I mean, that's only good stewardship. But I'm not interested in creating cannon fodder out there for individuals who are against it, I'm not interested in confusing people about the issue. So my question would be, if, let's say, we don't read the ordinance before the election, can we read the ordinance, and I don't know where the election is versus our next council meeting, but can we do that, first reading as soon as possible after the election, and in order to help speed the process up, so we're not waiting another two weeks, can we do a special session, or is that a no-go sort of thing? So, the question would be for Eric.
I think I can answer that. The answer is yes. Obviously, Election Day is always the first, you know, Tuesday after the first Monday in November, so you would then have to wait two more weeks before you could approve an ordinance under first reading, and then that would also push you into December. That could totally be done, and I think one of the things that also begins to allow you to do is, with the separate RFP for design-build team, they could then also, during that same time, be looking at doing some VE and space analysis to ensure that we actually are, you know, sized appropriately, because there's one thing between an architect and another one, you get a design-build firm together to come in and tell you, you don't need this square footage, you need that square footage. And if anything, I think we could economize on that as opposed to stay that size. So I think you could also gain some headway there as well, if you were to do as you suggested, the third Monday in November, and then the first Monday in December to do that ordinance, if you wanted to go that route.
And then that would give us the necessary time to get it out to the market, so we potentially would not spend as much on the overall cost of the project.
Yeah, and I agree, from all the analysis that not only PFM has provided to us, but I'm a voracious Bloomberg reader, that the Fed's probably not going to be able to take any action anyway until that first quarter of 2017, so by that, they'd never work in January, so they're probably, the earliest they'd be able to do anything with interest rates would be February, so you could still get out ahead of that, I believe.
Okay. Kathleen, do you have some comment there?
Yes, I'd like to mention, too, that we can also design the ordinances such that they are pending the outcome of the election, so that we can get them in process. The way this is set up on the current schedule that you're seeing on the screen, this is second reading would be the day before the election, so we won't be doing anything until the day of the election anyway.
You know, if I could offer a comment on that subject as well, you know, my preference, I think, is to get out in front of the election, you know, even given some of the risks. I think the comments Councilmember Yates or questions are asking are very on point. I will point out that the Fed is not the only indicator of what our interest rates or environment's going to look like. If the market begins to sniff out that there's going to be a raise in February, the interest rate environment's going to, is going to pull up, and so, to the comments from PFM, I think are right on, that, you know, there's going to be increased demand here, and I would like to get out in front of that personally, and I think that's something that we can rationalize to our voters and explain to them personally. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Olson.
I am worried about, I guess I should have this.
Sorry.
You're not going to say anything to me.
No, I'm good.
I am worried about people using it to the negative, because we have folks who would love to do that. So how do, I agree with you, so how do we make sure that doesn't happen? I mean, what do you think we do?
I think we've got to, you know, put out a message as to why this is happening and explain that, you know, this is the most prudent way to be financial stewards, because if it does pass...
But how do we do that? Of course, that's what we want to do, but how do we go about doing that?
You know, I think that we're...
Like, what are you envisioning you would do, or what should we be doing? Because it seems like we have...
We've got to communicate with our constituents, you know, through all the available channels, is what I would suggest to you. You know, we have done some publications, special publications in front of this, you know, keep in mind that the election and the ballots will be going out pretty darn soon. When do they mail out from Rappo County, does anybody know?
October 18th.
Okay, and so, and so I don't know that we have time for another special publication. I think we would probably be limited, just thinking it through out loud here, to our sort of normal channels, if you will, and I think that, again, I generally trust our electorate is smart in being able to understand these issues and being able to make a decision that's in the best interest of Inglewood. And if the answer comes back no, the answer comes back no, and to Mrs. Wrinkle's point that we wouldn't be doing much work prior to the election anyway, and so there's no real loss as far as labor or, you know, efforts there.
So first reading would be November 7th? Is that what that means?
No, it would be October 17th or November 21st, those are our two options, I believe. Does that sound correct?
Oh, sorry, first reading would be the 20, the 17th, okay.
Yeah, October 17th is what's proposed under this timeline, however, I believe the alternative that we just spoke through, to wait until post-election, would be November 21st, first reading.
Or is an alternative November 7th, so we'd do the first reading...
That would be pre-election, that's pre-election.
But still be the first one, and that wouldn't be a big deal then.
But if we're... Yeah, okay, that's a good point.
November 21st would be the second one. I mean, that's a compromise between the two without getting out ahead.
Others maybe perhaps like to weigh in to give some direction here?
I agree with that.
Mind using that mic?
Linda's hawking it. I'd like to get on in front of this as well, you know, I know that there's some that are going to be concerned about doing this at all, at least we can say, should it pass, that we're trying to make sure that we're being as cost-effective as possible, and I'd rather be preparing to be proactive versus reactive to this, so I'd like to go ahead and move on forward, thank you.
Others want to weigh in?
I'd like to hear what everybody thinks, because I think this is important, and we're all in on this together.
Some folks on the left, do you guys mind commenting?
I'm a little hesitant about doing it before the election, only because I don't want people to get the wrong impression, but that being said, I think it is important to kind of start it as soon as possible, so that if it does pass, we can kind of get it moving immediately at the most, you know, cost-effective rate.
Thank you.
I'm not interested in doing anything until the voters decide.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I actually am not interested in doing anything until the voters decide either.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in back and respond to that?
One part of me, the business side of me, would say, go ahead and prepare it, let's start moving this thing, and we can always put the brakes on if they say no. But, with that said, this isn't necessarily all business, it is community politics, and by doing that, I think we may actually jeopardize the project by trying to do it ahead of time, but the moment it's passed, we got to jump right on it and not waste any time.
So you would support the 21st rather than the 20, I'm sorry, the 17th or the 7th?
Hold up that.
Okay. Yeah, so again, I'm asking, would you support November 21st then, over the two alternatives that have been presented, which again is November 7th and October 17th?
Wow. I mean, one part of me would say the 7th would, you know, at that point in time, there is no, nothing that we can do to affect it, but we're going to announce what we're going to be talking about, council. I'd say the 21st is probably the earliest we could do, unless we do a special session, you know, on the 14th or something.
Thank you. I've heard three folks who say they'd like to wait post-election for the 21st on first reading, is there a fourth?
I would be supportive of waiting.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have some direction on that and some consensus to move forward with scheduling that first reading on November 21st, so that will come forward to the council. Do you need any more direction at this time, do you think? Thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Moving on to our next agenda item is operational update. I apologize, Mr. Keck, we did not leave you much time for this presentation. Would you like to still try to fit it in? Looks like he will, so.
I'll just go.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to give you an update on where we are with the operational plan that was presented last year. There were 17 sub-themes, four major themes, and so, as you can see, our four major themes, it kind of got messed up on here for some reason, people, process, technology, and finance, all around a strategy. And so, I'll quickly go through this, the sub-theme, strategy and planning, you know, where are we right now? We've completed the evaluation and prioritization of plans, the identification of planning gaps has been done, we started to develop a strategic plan process, it's currently underway, we're going to engage employees and stakeholders, that also started. Council's also a part of that stakeholders group, and the intent is to really engage the council, starting in January of 2017, once we actually have a strategy framework put together. Each department also is developing their own strategic plan, that's underway. Communications and marketing, as you're very aware, this was a very high focus for us, as it was a major area of, of an issue for us with our communication, and so, we did complete a citywide communications and marketing plan, that was just recently completed. We are currently in the process of putting together an implementation plan for that, an RFP for professional services has been created, and we expect to get that out, actually, this week. I'll talk about that a little bit more under manager's choice. We created a communications department, that was also completed in September, and also, we have been working to build internal capacity. So as you can see here, my loss, the city's still gain, Allison Carney is now being moved to communications manager. However, we also will be trying to bring in a, and they probably will not be working in this building, because artists don't work in this building, except for design-build, apparently, but we'll have a graphic artist, as well as a copywriter that's part-time, that we'll be recruiting, so we'll be looking for those levels of expertise to help us. We're going to be providing training for appropriate staff on communication, and that's pretty much everybody, but that's to be determined yet from our communications plan, and obviously, we're going to be looking at evaluating and improving effectiveness as we move forward. Customer service, this is an area, quite frankly, that we have not spent a lot of time defining quite yet, because we've, we understand...